Thank you for your. Jeremy, sorry to put you off about that, but we had a time to speak with that lawyer.
No problem, I understand.
You know how lawyers are.
Um, flexible. All right. Uh, my name is Jeremy Rock from the Emergency Management Director, for those that don't know me. Um, just like to uh say thank you to the board, um Commissioner Eustace, I know you've been here a few months, but uh welcome. And uh, and uh, thanks for the acknowledgement Sheriff uh Ross for the uh, the ice storm. Um, that obviously was a whole crew in here working married to this room for a lot of hours per day for about two and a half weeks. So if it wasn't for their response and their dedication to the citizens of Chippewa County, um that response and uh, working on recovery would never have happened without them. So I, I think those down. Now we're on the uh, the recovery phase and all that. Um, thanks to Jeff and Sue are a huge part of that. On uh Sue's expertise with grants and uh knowing how to work those systems, so we're uh, we're a step ahead of uh, all that because she's one step ahead of us. Uh, so she's uh, big thanks to her. Um, again, this is the uh, my twenty-four um annual report. I summarized it quite a bit. I'll go through and read every single bit of it. Um, if you have any further questions following this, feel free to uh reach out to me. All my contact information is on the back there. And I will answer any questions. Uh, this first uh page three there, I always put that in there. Um, it's on every annual report. That just kind of summarizes what emergency management's uh, what it is, will focus on. And it uh gives a map of how the digits broken up so that we uh, if there's any changes, I put changes in there. If there's no changes, then I, I leave it as is, but this is kind of a refresher. Again, our mission is to uh deliver mitigation preparation, response, recovery, recovery to those citizens of Chippewa County. With that being said, um Michigan State Police Emergency Management, uh Lieutenant Castro still oversees the Region Seven. And he's my liaison to um, to Lansing if I need anything or questions asked. Uh, so he oversees Region Seven, which is seventeen counties. Um, needless to say, he's a busy guy. So um, but obviously we have regional meetings and we're in contact with him um sometimes weekly if stuff's going on. If not, uh, we see him monthly. Uh, so we just want to review some of my goals for uh twenty twenty-four. Obviously, uh, it's always a goal of mine to work with the community, work with the state and work with the federal um representatives and build relationships so that uh any kind of disaster uh contacts, faces are known. Um, and those contacts can be made if, uh, if needed. So that is uh my goal, it's an ongoing goal. Um, Be Alert is always uh, is always pushed out there through myself, through Charlestown County, through Emmett County, through C C nine one one. Um, so that is a uh, that's a goal of mine to get more people informed with that. Uh, as most of you know, we use that quite a bit during the ice storm and it was a great resource to have uh for communications to push out press releases and meetings. Focus on uh hazard materials. Uh, I mean, I said this before, that was obviously in my background law enforcement. My, my weak area was, was uh hazard materials. So uh when I was at the Great Lakes Homeland Security Conference this last year, that was definitely my focus. Um, to go attend some speakers that talk about hazard materials so I can gain more knowledge on that. Um, the uh, the big one was the train derailment. I know we don't have a train rail system up here in Chippewa County, but they were feared to have materials which spilled, so same concept as a, as a tanker spill. Moving on to the uh, the portable uh tank simulator that uh E M H S D has uh implemented and their, their training system is portable train, uh training tanker that will move throughout the state. Uh, that was not brought to Chippewa County, however, was brought to the other county, so somewhat uh close to us for those that wanted to attend. Um, and my last goal for twenty twenty-four was a, a degree management plan. Uh, however, that uh plan is quite lengthy and a lot more in, in depth than I anticipated. So that is uh, was not completed in twenty-four, but uh moving forward, uh hopefully by the end of this year, we'll uh, we'll move into twenty-six. Um, my local emergency planning committee, um we, we made quarterly. All those um meetings are documented. The Sarah uh titled two and three hazmat plans are all been reviewed and submitted to the state uh to meet their requirements. And the meeting requirements are required for meetings uh a year. So those are all, those are all met. Uh, we always have one state uh L A P C meeting, uh which is down in Grand Rapids. At the Homeland Security Conference, I attend that with all the emergency managers, they'll be state of Michigan. The uh, local planning team is also a little requirement by emergency managers. That is uh, your locals, uh we meet, we uh, we train, we plan for events. Obviously, we uh, we support the Bridgewater. So uh, once those plans are, I'll, I, I brief the, the team on the Bridgewater, uh what our role, what our responsibilities will be um during that phase. To touch base on the Bridgewater a little bit, uh when I first started, I would, I would work up in Mackinac City. Um, I kinda, I thought about that for a little bit and why I'm up here when everybody else is up here. What if something happens in Chippewa County? So uh, two years ago, I revamped that. I now um Deputy uh Ron Benlin and I uh work out of this room, monitor the Bridgewater. If something else happens, we are set up here in this room and ready to go to support the Bridgewater. Um, in case the extra areas. Northern exposure, I'll touch base on that here next. Uh, once the, the northern exposure um planning process is uh in the works, I uh brief the local planning team on on the exercise, uh give them the information I want, see who's available to um participate in that exercise. And make sure that uh, we, I guess, gather any other departments that uh would like to fix some fate and wealth as well and um I'll hit on that exercise next. So with that being said, the uh, the exercise was uh June twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we started the day, day one with just tabletop exercise, all three counties, Mackinac County, Emmett County, and Chippewa County. Uh, we went through the exercise. Uh, there was some individuals there that did not want to participate with the weights on the ground. They just wanted the tabletop. So they, they participated as well, uh just to get us to know how we exercise winds. Um, that is uh, the focus was a threat towards critical infrastructure. We use the waste park free plant, Embridge stations and E T energy stations in Chippewa County. Um, that was a tri-county exercise, so we wanted to test our capabilities on connection between the three counties and how we would, I guess, uh, how we would connect our three E O Cs if something were to happen. Uh, tri-county is obviously we share the Mackinac Bridge, we share Embridge Station, uh so we work together quite a bit. Um, so that's uh, I thought that was a, that was a good training exercise. That was uh, we had about uh, I think uh sixty, sixty boots on the grounds of with the National Guard. Uh, and obviously, for those that know, the, the process would be to uh have that threat come out, have uh myoc refunds on that threat. We would exhaust all local law enforcement, um all local first responders to protect for protection. That would then trigger the local evacuation and then that will trigger the National Guard deployment. Obviously, that's an exercise that's all pre-planned, so everything um is in place, but uh it was, it was a good exercise to work with the the National Guard and down to the locals. Uh, page six, there's just some pictures there, just some area, so it's uh, the exercise there. Uh, the E O C was set up at the ninety-sixth Columbus Hall. Um, thanks to them, to say great to me for uh utilizing their space because it is such a large space that uh, it, the larger building is needed. Um, I attended the oil spill, uh French Farm Lake Tape Top Exercise at Logan County that uh incorporated Mackinac County, Chippewa County, and uh the Little Travers Bay, Ottawa Indians and FEMA. That was a focus on if there was a spill, defined by what response was needed. Uh, I know it's open in the county, but still pertains to what would happen if it happened here. So there was uh, there was good connections, good discussions and um really focused on what needed to be deployed if something were to happen. Uh, the OXCOM auxiliary radio, they used to be called ham radios. Uh, operators, we uh participated in an exercise that in October uh twelve twenty twenty-four. That was about four hours long and so that is a focus on testing your communications base plan. Um, testing your primary down to your, your left or your communications. There was uh twenty-three counties that were involved, over three hundred people that were involved in this exercise. We uh were able to do an exceptional job in um point system on a point scale. And Chippewa County took uh first place, Charlestown County took third, Emmett took fourth, or third, sorry. Chippewa, Charlestown, Emmett. And there was uh, they received first place. So I saw big uh, kudos to them. We, as first responders and law enforcement, participated in the uh straight area of Frederick Douglass Union Training and active shooter training with their departments. They, this is the second time they've reached out to them because of their employee turnover. Uh, they would like some training, so they continue to uh keep in touch with us. We continue to go in there, offer by training to them during one of their holidays that they uh, that they have lost. So that's a, it's a good, uh, again, we do it a lot in schools, but it's good to get the community to do it, isn't it? Uh, moving on to the Chippewa County incidents and events. The, obviously, I talked about supporting the Mackinac Bridgewater, so there's a role work on that, on that, how we support that and how we try to increase the connection between the three counties. And then obviously that incorporates M S P as well because there are manholes up there, saying this on the north side and Mackinac City on the south side. So virtual option, uh, is there, we have check-ins uh usually every hour. The Great Lakes Tissue Factory, we still are, we're continuing to, I have meetings on the tissue factory. The High Hero and the building itself. I don't have them quite as often kind of as information, your issues um arise, we incorporate them in as far as being by command. The original units by command, uh meetings that were, we take them back together and we, we talk to be discussed and see how we can afford that. Just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh reference to that. So uh, move down to uh, we're on page seven here, completed the courses and conference. Worked with uh E M H S D and FEMA and brought a um, a government operations planning course here. Uh, we held it right here in this room. That was opened all over Michigan, uh and structured by, by FEMA. That was a design core government officials and uh emergency responders for buildings, rule, rule plans. Some other training that we uh hosted, uh obviously we do, we do dive trainings every, every month we get out and we dive. But uh, it was brought to my attention that the Chief Gordon Temple had a underwater drone within his department. So I reached out to him and offered to uh come off to, on one of our boats, run the drone, work with the dive team, see how we can incorporate that and uh give the field for how that visibility was. Working with the divers underwater. So that was uh, that was good to have them out there. Utilize that drone in case uh that resource that really hit there. The Northern Michigan Area Committee that I'm a part of, uh invited the uh unified command, some of the individuals involved to come speak at their meeting as far as the, the tissue company required on the response and covering the issues, the hurdles. Um, so we went over to Traverse City and spoke to that committee as well about their response. Again, I've talked about the, the Homeland Security Conference, uh myself, Deputy Benlin, Chief Todd Woods and Lieutenant, uh sorry Detective Lieutenant Malone. Attend that in twenty twenty-four. It's a, it's a conference down in Grand Rapids. There's several breakout sessions and also a school track course that uh Deputy Ron Benlin obviously focused on school track. Detective Malone focuses on investigation portion, usually FBI is down there and has public speakers as well as uh emergency management uh tracks. So we all have kind of our different areas that we go down there to focus. Obviously, can, continue to collaborate uh training with the, the Weather Service. We uh hosted a Sky One Training on uh April sixteen twenty-four. That is part of the uh, the Storm Ready Program that's Chippewa County is involved in. Uh, we have to host one of these annually with them. That is open to the public. I tried to spread the word as much as possible. And post those files for, for them, but uh obviously continued uh coordination with them. Then uh, now sending the resource, when you provide the same information, uh they provided, uh they, I support the Chippewa County Fair. Uh, during that week, I put in a request, they keep an eye on the weather all along. If something, if anything pops up, should pop up storm that's not in their morning brief, then they call Ron right away and call them along, get us over with that. And then with the acting, whatever actions we do based on this. Uh, moving to page nine, the O E N budget. Uh, obviously, the the judge, uh the sheriff that brought up the, the funding, you'll see in here that uh back in twenty-two and twenty-three budgets are all in here. And then you'll see twenty-four. Uh, E M P G grant is cut quite a bit. That is one of, well, that's two reasons. That is cut from FEMA, which was, I think, cut a million dollars shy. And then you'll see the um, the art funds are obviously not available anymore. So twenty-two and twenty-three, there's still art fund available. They took those art funds, distributed them evenly throughout the, the county. So that, so you'll see the E M P G grant is a little bit higher in twenty-two and twenty-three. So you'll have the art fund and they cut the budget by eight bucks. So with that being said, continue to um, talking to the representative. If that comes up in topic, then express your concerns if you may, if you have. So uh, with that being said, the expenditure, hundred and twenty-seven, uh just over a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And then uh, so the op, total operating costs are a hundred and twelve thousand because of the two grants, the M G and the H M Q. Continuing on page nine, uh goals for twenty-five are obviously to continue uh my operations plans within the county, in the community, in Chippewa County. Uh, we like to test those plans during the uh exercise. And it's obviously a requirement for the state that I, when I host an exercise, I put one of the plans to test and put that into my average action view. Uh, strengthen the community outright reach uh with the, the community and keep on promoting the alert. Uh, continue to build uh and strengthen the partnership with the local, state, federal uh government. Obviously, the uh, the degree management plan is a focus of mine as well. And the, the last, but not least, the Instant Command. Um, and the Michigan Critical Infrastructure Management System, which is I Sims. Obviously, there's, there's always a turnover um within um the entities in Chippewa, Chippewa. So to keep up on uh the training with that, so when uh it does happen, everybody's turning up on that system. So that brings my conclusion. I just want to uh thank the, the board and uh the continuing support for emergency management here in Chippewa County. And I think we um uh do some bounds over the last couple of years and I hope you guys support that. Uh, to hit a little bit on the, the ice storm. I really appreciate all your guys' phone calls, text messages, uh checking in on us and the support uh, uh whatever we needed during that uh, during that response. So I know a little bit of questions, but you guys haven't.
Sheriff, just kind of, just outstanding, outstanding job. Making that position, ran with it, and it's stellar, second to none. I call you sheriff's son, second.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
Right on. Just for the public certification, we used to, we started the emergency management just like uh we started the three-county dispatch. That just did not work out. And so under Dale's leadership, he, he insisted that we move that back to Chippewa County. So you split up back then into each individual. And Jeremy, Todd, or Danny, great job. You're really doing good work. Well, we appreciate that. Very proud to be on this board in Michigan, each and every county, wherever you go.
Thank you, Lord Sheriff, appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you.
I have a, I have a question. Yes, um, I, I see you have an O E N budget.
Yeah.
Is that part of the Sheriff's Department's budget as well? Does it, does it come from the Sheriff's budget? Or is this a separate line item that is happening? So you're basically on your own. You're not relegated to the work, uh. Can you tell me what is the Sheriff's Department's management program?
Uh, just to sort of pile on that a little bit, thanks. Honor state law, only government close the car into the chair. So yeah, the position uh is in the Sheriff's Department, overseen by the Sheriff, but uh but they're, they're only pulling up operations in the chair.
Each county, let's piggyback on that, each county is a little setup a little bit different. Some are, some are law enforcement backgrounds, some are tied to C C nine one one, uh and some have fire backgrounds. So every county has a little bit different how their emergency management. You know, some are fire chiefs and emergency managers, some are the last name, so. It's just set up a little bit differently.
That is your, yeah, you've got a quick question. Yep, that is, I just wanted to be, be sure you weren't depending on the Sheriff Department users to run the, the O E N budget.
And so as far as, uh, a lot of this training at Homeland Security Conference, the Academy of Sales Conference that uh we like to send some people to. Um, the Northern Exposure Exercise, the region, also, they support those. So they fund, so we pay for them upfront and you go to the training, you send in reimbursements and you're reimbursed on for those trainings as well. So.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Sheriff, I I thought there was that. Yeah, but he, Robert is more assistant, right? Like he works for the Sheriff's Department. And then during this whole incident, uh we were wrecking the others, Lieutenant Detective McAdams, Lieutenant Kivo and the rest of you. The crew worked hand in hand with you on the needs of the county, so. It's important to know that Sheriff's Department, with, with the Sheriff's Department.
Sure.
And they had all the other persuasions, Kevin, Kevin Rhodes, and so on.
I'll get a pile of more. Sheriff, the, back in twenty twenty, he brought this back, started in twenty nineteen. Uh, we, our contribution to Tri-Con was a little over eighty thousand dollars. And now he jumped forward six years, yes, five years, and so, I mean, it's still hard to easily walk.
For sure. Plus it's, it's for direct supervision. So it's a lot to handle. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Sheriff. We're down to uh nine, Finance Director's Report.
One fifty-four to one sixty-one on Tri-Con.
Uh, so we're looking at uh um, end in June thirtieth, so halfway through the year. Um, the first report, page one fifty-eight. The revenues as of June thirtieth, twenty-five, two million five hundred twenty-nine thousand fifty-seven dollars eighteen cents or sixteen point three two percent of the budget as compared to the year before, June thirtieth, twenty-four, two million three hundred fifteen thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars thirty-eight cents or fifteen point four eight percent of the budget. So the revenues are up two hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred seven dollars and eighty cents over the prior year, same period or nine point two percent difference. There were no um line, uh revenue lines that were over twenty-five thousand that we haven't already discussed in prior months, so I'm just gonna skip that. On the expenditure side, June thirtieth, twenty-five, seven million three hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars forty-eight cents or thirty-eight point six three four percent. As compared to the year prior, six million nine hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars fifty-three cents or thirty-nine point thirty-eight percent of the budget, which is an increase of four hundred thirteen thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars ninety-five cents or a high point nine percent increase over the prior year. The line, um, the department's over twenty-five thousand that we haven't talked about in a different month this year. Uh, Department four thirty Animal Control is up a hundred and twenty-four thousand and Department six hundred Health Departments up a hundred and eleven thousand. And that is because of a timing, the third quarter of the next, June thirtieth instead of July one. Um, so they'll clear next month. Uh, Department six six two Childcare for the county is down sixty-three thousand. Um, this is because um, this was that raised the age grant for the new binocular cell and we don't have that anymore, so that one will be going away. Uh, Department nine oh two appropriations or transfers out is up thirty-nine thousand. Um, this is a combination, we put in a hundred thousand dollars into the um disaster assistance for um the ice storm. We put a hundred thousand, the board appropriated that. So that increased it, but childcare um amounts are down this year. So it's kind of done a net of an increase, something thirty-nine thousand, so it's not as high as that hundred thousand. Um, and then Department nine fifty-four Insurances is down a hundred and twenty-three thousand and that is because of timing of when the payment was made in July in twenty-five versus June twenty-four last year. So that will also be clearing up next month. The second report, um Cash and Investment Accounts, Cash and Rebound Fund. All, all funds, uh June thirtieth, twenty-five, thirty-one million nine hundred thirty-five thousand eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents as compared to a year prior, twenty-nine million twenty-two thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, this is an increase of two million nine hundred twelve thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and forty-three cents. The general fund, June thirtieth, twenty-five, seven million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand five eighty-nine forty as compared to a year before, uh June thirty, seven million three hundred thirty-eight thousand a hundred and two dollars and twelve cents. So that's up six hundred sixty-one thousand four eighty-seven twenty-eight. The third um report, which I only give you quarterly, is the Quarterly Fund Balance Report. Um, the beginning fund balances, those are now the audited after the audit has been complete. So those are actually where we ended twelve thirty-one and twenty-four. The year-to-date revenues for, for year-to-date, a year-to-date expenditure is year-to-date, and then the year-to-date fund balance for each of the funds that the county has. And going through them all, I just wanted to point out Fund one oh one for the county. As you can see, the revenues are two point five million, expenditure is seven point three million up to date. This is because most of our taxes don't start coming in until the July one. So the fact that the um Fire Boards and this board has been very conservative and has left the county with a good fund balance, that is crucial for the first six months of the year and it makes my god alive. Any questions?
That doesn't amaze you, but nothing else will.
We're on the upward slope now.
Any questions for our answer? How about a motion, receive and file?
Say, Ford?
That important.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claire Mack?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
You bet.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner St. St.
Yes. Thank you, Sue. Good work, thank you. Rodney Administrator's report. He's still with us.
I think so. Hopefully. Yeah, resolution twenty-five ten, that's item twelve, so I'll hold that conversation till we get to that item on the table. Uh, as the Sheriff indicated, and Lieutenant Runcum, FEMA had a education session on July thirty-first, and get aware about FEMA funds. Uh, so the President has awarded FEMA, directed to work with communities for reimbursements for public assistance only. Uh, public assistance defined as municipal units and or nonprofits that work directly with municipalities in response to the storm. Uh, does not cover, uh, any public or private property, rather, review, uh, nor does it cover, at this point, any, uh, cost to utility companies. State of Michigan, my understanding, has appealed that. It's under appeal review. Uh, so at this session, the FEMA represent, representatives in the State of Michigan went through the process where each municipal units or nonprofit can, uh, go online, go online for the state and the feds. And, uh, why for your, um, grant funds, um, as indicated, suit the preliminary work on that. Uh, so we're, we're status, and a preliminary assigned a person to review that. Here, coming up, the board will, will give authorization for us to move forward on that. Uh, information was provided, um, by OEM to each of the units. Uh, they've been notified a couple of times of the session. Uh, we'll place the slideshow of the state to provide us, uh, the link to the municipal units. Uh, but it's important that if the units are interested, that they individually go and walk on and take care of that moving forward. Don't remember the exact date. I know it's coming up quick, because of August the eighth, ninth, or twenty-eighth.
It's thirty-nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, so the deadline to apply for this review is coming up pretty quick. Uh, we'll, we'll pursue forward once we get approval from the board. Any questions?
Questions with the Administrator and the comments? Here you go. Last good one. We're down to committee reports. Mr. Sangster.
Sure, um, we had a meeting this morning, and I'd be looking for a motion to accept the right action for the Board, which assumes meaning to appoint Curtis Chambers to the Water Waste Commission. The vacancy commence in August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, to December eighty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Court? Cross. Thank you. Adam Clark.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes. Thank you, that carries everyone. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're down to old business twelve, removal of resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten. Who's handling?
Anyone? Because it says removal of, yeah, but are you remembering to put it down?
Well, we have to remove it from the table twice a back, after. How else do we need to care on that? Do we have to take a vote or anything, or is it just?
You can do a motion.
Motion, take it off the table, place it back after.
Need to do that after thirty days, when that's its meeting, so. I would, I would move your, move it from the table and put it back on again.
Support.
Move him, support it. Adam Clark.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yeah. That motion's period seven oh. So, now that, I'm gonna talk about this and vote on it. Mike, you had comments on this, the voting to go to private, as I understand it.
As far as the four fifty-seven million?
Yeah.
Um, really, I, I don't have any comments, I mean.
I mean, everybody's opposed to it, everybody in the systems is opposed as well.
But what's the four fifty-seven? Talking, we're talking about, I thought.
No. No, it's resolution twenty-five.
Department regarding privatization.
Oh, I'm hoping it's, yes, sure.
Yes, privatization, so we need this somewhere, and we don't want to go with that.
That's Mr. Chair, I mean, as, as one that brought this up for concern, you know, again, it talks in here about other nonprofits, possibly, you know, doing these things. And, you know, when I certain words, like Oklahoma Health, we operate in our counties, and then, you know, if there's opportunities to expand that. Again, my concern is, they didn't tell us what they're gonna do to improve it, they just told us why we shouldn't do this. That guy didn't tell we're gonna improve on it in the health, just a little mental health situation that going on from, you know, in Traverse City, from our county people. You know, more money, we, we're, already, our state spends more money on education, and we have the less performed one and the worst performance. Thank God our local district isn't like that. And again, our health organism, that's what I just worry about, when we get on as, we for counties. And it goes back to this tax revolving fund, why, why should the state bail out counties that failed? You know, I almost don't feel that as a taxpayer, the state should give us, the county, our money back, and this is just another one of those examples. Where we're operating fairly well, and there's some of them that aren't, and they're just, you know, and they're getting more support on our back as a commissioner. I support the, the whole program, I think, but that's just one of them.
Current program.
Right. You know, we haven't really told anything different on that, and so that's just was my concern. I need, I have nothing against it, or, you know, I have no problem supporting this, but I did learn, you know, at this time, there really isn't anyone to speak that. So, I can't not say there's someone better to do it, or say someone's better at this time. We just read in there that they talk about private, non-profits doing that. We have, you know, local health departments, we have some local, you know, we do have some healthcare assistance. We do behavioral health at some organizations, so there are other things possibly out there, and I just don't ever want to close down the fact that we're not looking for better avenues to increase the quality of behavioral health in our communities. And that report the guy gave us didn't tell us how much more and better it was gonna get, he just told us how much more money they might need. So, that's why I'm just very concerned about, and I'll leave it at that, and I support the position of the board.
Still support the current system.
I, I, I have, I will support this, but that was the position I, where I came.
Why the question came up?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Plainfield.
Because you're turning it by way, may make a comment. With my, uh, background and experience with privatization of government services, particularly relative to roadways and water transportation services. Typically, when we privatize somewhere to take other unit service, it's done a very short-term contract. This is all contracted, anything based upon a contract period, and it's typically a very short period. This is what I experienced with the Departments of Transportation across various states and the United States that privatized. I'm not afraid of this at all, and I will not be able to, probably the rest. I think that, uh, you know, we experienced this, I think, I can remember Sheriff Claremont at the time, and his concerns, and it was heartbreaking, frankly. Uh, with the Department of Health and Human Services and our state employees that after COVID never came back, and the lack of service that was provided. And I think we've been very deeply concerned about mental health, and I think it thrives a lot of our costs, that impact our community in this board. But, uh, I do think that, I agree with Commissioner Sangster, we haven't really heard the positive side, we just sort of big campaign about why this should not happen. But we haven't had the opportunity to hear. Part of that is probably the industry's problem, and not addressing that, and making their position well-known. Okay. Thank you, I know I made the topic even better, but, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I was just wondering, just to that point, your large campaign to fund the fast car dollar. You know, and again, no offense to the government employee, but we're trying to bury all these holidays, all these, you know, government days, eight days off, and then growing the cost of government. And keeping all, if not going to fix this problem, it's only going to get more expensive.
As time goes, you bet.
That's just why, instead of, you know, our role, it's doing a fair job, but I, I think I'm with him, I can't, you know, it's, it's not, it's the sport.
Something that the year of the state.
Well, and rightfully so, I, I don't, I don't have no problem with people, you know, protecting their own there, but I also have to look out for me and my, my voice constituents that put me here, you know, and you look at the issue.
Makes you wonder, private entities, he doesn't get involved in kind of government duties unless it's a profit one.
Well, and I'm not necessarily supporting the whole privatization of it, but reading this, they're talking about nonprofits, and that was something, you know, again, there's, there's NEMSCAs, there's community action groups, there's, you know, there's other groups out there that could possibly run the system in regionally, because this is the problem we have in northeast Michigan, is we're not south, and it's, it's just a different dynamic, whether it's small business or government-run. We're at the end of the road, a hundred and eighty degrees of our market is on capital, it's water. So, you're already got a challenge, you know, eighty percent of businesses, business comes from a five-mile market penetration, so everything along the shoreline is already having, especially since we don't have the, you know, the infrastructure like they do around Grand Haven, Grand Rapids, you know, along those shoreline, but even like Luddington, Frankfurt, a lot of those shoreline cities, we, we're just different. And that's why I guess we haven't heard it, I want to hear something more different than how we're gonna address this. I don't have the answer, and I don't claim it, but I just, I see the problem. Without leaving that, and thank you for your long.
So, at this point, Mr. Sangster, would you recommend, go ahead and support it?
Well, I, I, I personally, as you see, Warfield stated, publicly can't support it, but I understand the position of that.
Mr. Chair, for that. And I agree. I mean, Joe's do, Joe's did, Joe's did, Joe, yeah, and what we got, and what we've had for many years, I hope, isn't working. Uh, and, or maybe a private entity come in and just revamp the system, uh, short-term. But right now, the mental health system, uh, especially up here, as you said, Rich, uh, it just doesn't work. And those two chose did, Joe's did, Joe's got, and something needs to change. Maybe just bringing attention again to this thing.
I should be good.
When the states shut down the state mental hospitals, uh, that's when this began, and your county jails became the, you know, the halens for those that probably shouldn't be in the county jail, they should be in the mental health center or somewhere.
So, should we let resolution twenty-five dash ten then die, or, I guess?
Mr. Chair, I have a concern I, I think you have with this, that, you know, we did private entity involve this, and they take it over. Uh, but then, you're at the back and call, at least with the state regulating the funds, um, media's government have more control of that.
More media control.
Yeah, more media control, whereas if we turn it over to private entity, I, I just have a concern that every time you turn something over to private, privatizing. Uh, my position on that is that we wind up being.
More important.
Same product.
Sure, nonprofits are cost-plus, so you know how that goes.
So, we, Mr. Chair, if I may, we don't, we don't have that to know about, again, it's, it's just isn't working. More money, or that's, we can, we can tap into it every day where they play a memory, results don't change.
I agree with that. So, my question to the board, is to let that? They could just say they'll probably discuss them in a special.
If that's top, Mr. Chair, let, you know, you have to shoot that. Like, I would, you know.
So, who would make a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that motion. Okay, probably put aside and let it die, go further?
Yeah.
That would be nice, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it would be nice if the, in this private agency, we come forward and try to promote and answer some of the legitimate questions that some of us have, and that's unfortunate.
But they can do better.
Yeah, it's unfortunate they haven't been able to justify that, and they, we typically want to just say, there's money to be made there, and we can do it for less. And from my, from, well, from my experience, that would, that could be true. I mean, upwards to a thirty percent saving in the Department of Transportation. And with a lot of those, you know, in places you've all, out of the place when I was involved directly in that industry. And, uh, from firsthand experience with it, I saw now, the key to that, the answer, Mr. Newman, Commissioner Newman's concern, is that these are performance-based contracts that have milestones placed into them. Had you are penalized financially, we were, we failed, we need a milestone. So, it worked both ways. We could make money, we could lose money at the level of service with, well, what it had previously. The end result is seventeen states in United States of America, not exclusively to have such maintenance managed through privatization. And it does work, anyway, I believe it was for you. Thank you, Sangster.
All right, you have any comments? So, we have a motion on the board, and support it. Adam Clark.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes. Thank you, Board. That motion's taken up here, so that item's taken. Let's put on the due business thirteen, Nationwide four fifty-seven adoption plan, that's one sixty-nine on your iPad.
Yeah, this is an amendment to our Nationwide Retirement four fifty-seven plan. Uh, at the federal level, uh, there's been change called secured two-point-oh catch-up contribution. Uh, plans that were under, we have to take, uh, action to amend our plans to allow those provisions. So, this is a, then plan document to add Roth Furls. Uh, this option allows participants to make both pre-packs and Roth competitions, and then three catch-up contributions, depending on their eligibility. So, our recommendation is approved, the Nationwide four fifty-seven adoption agreement, uh, with approval for Administrator in charge to sign the agreement.
I like that motion, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dale, with support?
I'll support it.
Thank you. I'm supported. Adam Clark.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes. Here, we're down to thirteen, V one-two, uh, things that the Sheriff was talking about, so. Share vehicle purchase.
The first one, I believe, was originally brought to board, Commissioner Claremont was the sheriff. Um, we needed a new transport van, it was maybe a special, we'll make one, we approved it, and we put it in, and then they kept increasing the prices and delaying, and delaying, and last year, probably, the companies that were trying to do it anymore. We were given the prices of around two hundred forty thousand, to come up with a, um, different one, and, um, the ministry, I, and you have to pause on that. Um, since then, um, Lieutenant Tivo has found a twenty-twenty-five Dodge Ram thirty-five-hundred Promaster window van that has all the upfitting and specialty seating, and he has had the cost of this at eighty-three thousand five hundred and three dollars to the state bid. Plus, the additional lighting and equipment, uh, the estimated cost of ten thousand dollars, for a total cost of ninety-three thousand five hundred and three dollars. We budgeted approximately nine hundred and twenty thousand in the twenty-twenty-five budget, so this is kind of under that budget. So, we are recommending the board accept the Comstate bid of eighty-three thousand five hundred and three dollars, plus lighting and specialized equipment, installation of lots and thousands, for a total of ninety-three thousand five hundred and three dollars. And I don't know if the Sheriff has anything he wants to add.
No, I mean, a lot of, as, uh, a couple commissioners here know from experience, Sheriff Claremont and the Sheriff Newman with their old titles. The vans used for the work route to transport all the community service workers around, and most of them come from both the variety court downstairs and, uh, cover court upstairs. Is very, the majority of the community service hours, that's come from, so the vans used to transport them around. Um, as I'm sure you all know by law, we're required to, uh, take care of the autopsies, right? It doesn't matter if it's a death in the city, or Tusker or township, it's still the Sheriff's Department or the county's responsibility to handle that. The board has turned that responsibility historically.
The board has turned that responsibility historically over to the sheriff's department, so. The van is used for that, for autopsy transports, and then, uh, it's also used for prisons. If we have multiple people that need to go to prison, of course, like with our Ford Explorer, if we put two people on. If four people, we get sentenced to prison, we gotta make two traps, so we use the van for that. Part of the problem we were having getting a van was they either had seats that did not come out. So then we can't put the gurney for the autopsies. Or they were cargo van and they didn't have seats at all. So now we can't transport the people around. Um, and that's how this whole custom thing started and at two hundred forty thousand dollars, we said, no, this is what we got or figure something out and then. Luckily, this year Lieutenant Tiva was able to come up with this, so it, uh, it meets all our requirements. Seats fold up, I believe. It's got a higher roof for the. Workers to get in and out without, you know, banging their head. Um, it'll actually be a lot easier. The current van we have, you have to take the seats out and there, there's three bench seats, so they're, you know, you can imagine, they're heavy bench seats in a thirty-five hundred van, so it takes two people to get them out. Put them back in when, when we're done, so, um. This should fit all our needs. I don't know, Lieutenant Tiva, have anything there you did the research I need to add? So. The specialty seating, it's, um, it's, uh, it's not through that lot of time they use, they specialize in. Uh, long for some vans specifically, um. And need specialty seating. Currently, one of the vans that I have, uh, a video or pictures of. With the specialty seating, it it's, it's all permanent, but it folds up six hundred fifty pound weight bearing for two seats. So it seats fifteen people, that's including the driver and the passenger. So they fold up out of the way, we can easily get two gurneys in, we have health supplies, um, so on and so forth, personnel, specialty personnel. They're, uh, equipped, um, vans for ready entries or select use as well. Um, but they're converted that way. It's often, it it's so different than you see, uh, thirty-five hundred Dodge Ram high top van going down the road that people convert with the emphasis, basically what they're doing for us. The seating themselves, the permit are not there at all. This is a second outfit company that works in. With configuration with Lot Fante, which is under our state bid and the cone state bid for them as well. So it's all price included, specialty seating that we're requesting on top of the lighting, special equipment, the separation of inmates and board drivers. Thank you, Sheriff. I'm ready.
Yeah, thank you. What year is the old van?
What year did you get it? I think it's like ninety-seven, ninety-eight. It's old. It's nickel and diming. I was getting it.
So it certainly served its useful life. The cost savings alone for the autopsy transports, uh, is normal if you have a contract with locals, uh. It is outrageous and destructive, even back then.
Yeah, we looked into it.
Well, I can't imagine what it is now. Uh, and so, like I said, the old van served a useful life and I think this is a great deal compared to what we. Looked at before, like that being said, I'll make the motion. I would just support it. Any further discussion? Adam Clark.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Singsford.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Clamton.
Yes.
Thank you, Lord. That's very excellent. Now, how about, um, to the administration, the Ford, we can be one seventy.
The sheriff's office is also requesting, um, declare two thousand twenty-six Dodge Ram fifteen hundred big power crew cab or bikeboard support police vehicle, SPV. Um, this is also through the Fontaine Motors, um, to the state bid. They were quoted fifty thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. With an extra ten thousand expected for equipment and outfitting. Um, I believe that we have originally budgeted it in the twenty-five budget, um, eighty thousand for this, uh, for vehicle for the, um, administrative support. And, um, the recommendation is spring county commissioners make a motion to approve the purchase of one Dodge Ram. SPV plus equipment from budget line two eighty-four two six nine seventy and authorize a finance to make any necessary budget adjustments. Anything the sheriff would like to add?
No, just obviously, it's, uh, what did you say, twenty dollars dollars plus, I guess, about a hundred and fifty, and, um. The vehicle's replacing is a twenty sixteen with well over a hundred thousand miles on it. Um, actually, it was Sheriff Clermont's vehicle, so I tell you how, yes. We originally in twenty twenty-four, when the request was put on the budget line, was for another Ford Explorer administrative support vehicle. Uh, that came before the board earlier this year. I was on vacation, couldn't answer the questions unfortunately, and that had so was denied. The reason that we're going with a truck instead of another Explorer is multiple. During the ice storm, it was very clear we needed another truck. Four of my guys were using their personal vehicles to haul stuff, they couldn't. Uh, number two, uh, half our county's gravel roads, a quarter of it seasonal roads. We've got, um, Lieutenant, how many trailers? Oaks, Orbeez, Snowmobiles. Emergency response, I mean, whoa. Twelve, fifteen?
Yeah.
And we've got fifteen trailers and we've got a, a truck that is, uh. Through Stone Garden, it's usually used by Marine Patrol. Lieutenant Rutter has a truck. The undersheriff has trucks. We do have trucks. I'm not trying to say we don't have trucks, but we've got way more trailers and way more need for trucks and hauling stuff than I do for another Ford Explorer. We can drive it, but I did, the truck was, it needs much better, and it's cheaper. The Ford Explorer is more expensive, so. Any other questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Those are good. I just got a couple.
Sure.
Is this a, got it here, that is a police support unit?
Correct.
So does that mean it's, um, patrol certified?
It is patrol certified, it's not pursuit certified.
It's not pursuit certified.
Correct. The only ones that are pursuit certified are none of the other, other, none of the other counties. Yeah, but, uh. Number one, I don't know that the sheriff's ever been pursued. I should be the one driving, so I don't know, that's a concern. And number.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Um. The other truck is not pursuit rated either, um, which isn't a big deal because we're using it, you know, for administrative, hauling stuff, search and rescue. That kind of, but you had another question, sir? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Jeff Olson. Yeah, yeah, um, please, you know, talk to me about this and then it was brought up the last time. The whole pursuit thing, and I went online and did some research and they're, these are very, very hot, they're getting trucks in these fleets.
Yes, sir.
And they are, they do have pursuit vehicle ones that.
They, they, but they're essentially more expensive.
Okay, I guess that was. And then another question would help off and are getting involved in those.
Okay, well, I mean, as rule, our department has.
Two percent.
A year, two percent a year, and it's usually on the night shift, definitely. I mean, it's, it's never really been a.
Okay.
So that person. They, they, they had one last night, though.
Oh. So I, I, and also, and I will see that during the.
Yeah, and the, and the, it's not that it's any different, right, than the ones that are pursuit rated. They're, they're the same truck. They're just not paying to have it done, not paying to have testing done. It, it's still a police, so like, if I go buy a Ford, or if I go buy this exact truck from Frenelius. It's governed at ninety-five miles an hour. It's got a different transmission, it's got different tires, it's got different calipers, it's got different alternators, everything about the vehicle is different. The police support vehicle is not governed. It's whatever it is, a hundred and thirty-six miles an hour. It's got higher rated tires, it's got the different transmission, it's got the bigger calipers and brakes, that's why they call it a support vehicle. It's, and it's not just for long haulers. They make this vehicle for police, fire, EMS, um, and you're correct, they are very hot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, especially in our central city.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. To the point where they are getting them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
As the part of you like that. But the miles that you have on all your patrol vehicles. You know, the reason that I looked at it, from my point of view, it's that it's working for a backup to the other vehicles. Where this truck really isn't engineered, you know, for the night shift duties compared to the.
No, I was, I, I respectfully disagree, because it isn't. It's no different than all the years that we drove the thirty-five hundred patrol when we were on the sheriff.
I'm just worried about all the miles and capital, you know, the total parts.
Correct, and I, as I said in my annual report, that.
We have dealability right now, many, um, Ford's held on the market right now.
We have one, I believe, that we're waiting to have outfitted, is that correct, that, that we have here, um, that's waiting to be outfitted.
That's the Ford, not the Tahoe?
Correct, yes, sir. We have the Ford that was bought last year that's still waiting to be out there. We're still waiting for the, the Tahoe. Has been six months now, the stuff that we've been waiting for. It's just crazy how long it takes to get the, uh, the deal. So we have one right now that's waiting to be outfitted, that's your question, and then I had it said in my annual report, it's something that we're having addressed in the motorcycle and stuff.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion and support on it, George?
Uh, this, I made. Support, uh, this is on the.
I would make that, like, you could milk on the. A lot of decisions that we have to make as a board here. We make a strong, but our administrator first, and it's comparable. You know, we, when we look at wages and we look at. Union negotiations, a lot of what we do, we compare ourselves to the surrounding county, which I had a hard time getting my head around that originally. But now it does make sense because it probably is the best indicator of what goes, what we might want to consider doing. And confused as to why the sheriff's department perhaps ought to, um. Do, do a comparable study with other, if, if the counties can compare ourselves to, and ask what their fleets. I mean, are they driving trucks? If they are, then maybe we need a fleet of trucks. But I have no law enforcement experience, so from my perspective, I, I. I don't, I would be surprised to find that surrounding counties have fifty percent of their. Or more of their, uh, than perhaps, uh, Andrew Clermont can weigh in on that. Can you, can you know the law of hands?
Sure.
I've been out of it for a few years, so I would hate to comment on that.
Right.
But, but it would seem to me that if you looked at comparable, you know, I'd be interested to know how many in a county. That's a county, if you're telling us, there was a lot of counties.
This is state bid, it's not that.
Yes, sir, Chair, if I may, uh, well, for example, to that, city police departments, all they have are full size trucks, SUVs.
Oh, should, should you issue a wagon?
I just got a brand new plain unmarked Ford or.
Yeah, his was, his.
Yes, I, very, uh, I think Mr. Woods up in Mackinac City drives one. I know Gordy is very common. In fact, it's ignored, you know.
And they've got, my, my concern was not with the pickup truck, I own two myself. Um, I recognize that it's a dying game, we have. It, it's just. Do we have more pickups? Do we have more than, we have more than a traditional SUV than the thing you're doing?
Sure, but I, I don't, I would think that would be a department, had it was one in that department, because that's in that professional, that's his best way to manage it up.
Oh, and historically, so, but, uh, the department has vehicle, I mean, since Sheriff Clermont has, has never been a market patrol vehicle. We've, since I've been there, we've never had a market patrol vehicle, um. The, the vehicle right now is a Ford Explorer. It does have lights, as will this truck. If we were to get an Explorer, like had been previously through.
Mm-hmm.
I would probably do the same thing. Sheriff Clermont always said, I would get a administrative package Explorer, this gray color, it would not have a light bar, it would not have a cage, it would not have. Uh, markings on the side, they are, the administrative vehicles never have, um. We had the F two fifty crew cab truck that the sheriff drove for a while, because we needed another truck at the time, right? And, uh, so comparisons, I guess. A lot of departments are using trucks, I believe. Commissioner Olson said that he did the research on that, and as far as patrol vehicles, if that's what you're questioning, um. It, it changes a lot. Like Emma County is ninety-nine percent Tahos for patrol. I don't know how many trucks they have. They have a fleet of pickup trucks too, but for like night shift patrol guys, they're ninety-nine percent Tahos, um. The reason we never did in the past was because they were more expensive, right, if it was the cheapest, so we stuck with them. Emma County found that their maintenance cost was too high on the Ford's, the resale was too low, so they went to Tahoe. Charlotte County is half Tahos, half Durangos, and the sheriff, the undersheriff, both drive an unmarked pickup truck. And I don't know how many other trucks they have, but I know for a fact they both drive one. Like, uh, Commissioner Singsford said. The, uh, city police does have a new Tahoe that they're driving for patrol, but they also have a couple pickup trucks and this is the first time. Uh, in probably six, seven years that the city has had a Tahoe. Prior to that, all they used was pickup trucks. And their pickup trucks were not even special support vehicles. They were just a pickup truck, so. Hopefully that answers some of your questions.
Thank you.
Sheriff, we get it on my. Boy, probably just make a motion to approve the Dodge Ram SPV plus equipment, line item two eight zero four two six nine seventy zero point zero zero, authorized, Chair.
I'll support. Adam Clark.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
No.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Singsford.
Yes.
Thank you, Lord. That's carried six, oh, and one.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
We're down to, uh, thirteen C, PMA public assistance. Northern Michigan Ice Storm, one seventy-eight on the red side. By the way, we're in a double meeting, Gordon.
As the administrator last I mentioned, um, we attended a meeting, um, regarding this, um, PMA public assistance. Um, there's a pretty short window. We had thirty days, we made the president declared, which was July twenty-two, that we needed to, um. Make a request for public assistance, which I have done in the portal. We've set up the portal and now we're waiting on someone, was just assigned to us on Friday. They will be reaching out to us this week to start going through our particular needs as a county. Um, so we're re- requesting a motion to approve the request for public assistance regarding PMA public assistance to the after D R. Dash four eight eight zero for Northern Michigan Ice Storm, allow the finance director to electronic, they sign and submit on behalf of the chair and allow any necessary budget adjustments. The funding is for, um, seventy-five percent of all eligible expenditures, which right now we have about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars, including overtime that was paid. Um, but there's a potential for the debris management, which will be a, to be determined, because we have to have discussions with our personnel that case, so.
What do you say we get as much money from Washington, like, actually, as a tenant?
How am I got?
I'll make that motion, Chair.
Thank you. Jeff, thank you. I would support it, Adam Clark.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Singsford.
Yes.
Okay, Lord, we're down to thirteen D settlement agreement in Arkona LLC versus Spring County. We can turn our name, if you must, except the settlement of Arkona LLC. I'll second that. I would support it. Any further discussion?
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
This is basically what I follow the question, talking and probably should ask this in possession today. I have some concerns about this, you know, I, I'm in favor of what, or, or that. Going forward, I have some concerns about. How this is going to be managed, um, for example. And that's why I asked, can there be additional litigation? Um, because. What if an individual declared bankruptcy? And this property was part of the bankruptcy litigation? And now an individual can get money back. Because of this settlement. But that could skew his bankruptcy. Somebody, he or she or a company, could have used. Uh, this foreclosure as part of their bankruptcy litigation. So now they're going to get the money back that won't be. Supported in that litigation for bankruptcy. So my question is, is are there certain classes of people, corporations, that can't make this claim? To get this money back because of that, because of other litigation that's.
The treasurer's ready to give you that.
There she is.
Um. We do not foreclose on bankrupt, our parcels that are in bankruptcy.
No, I understand it, but what I'm saying. No, I can, I understand it. But what I'm saying is, what if the fore, so again, somebody has not declared bankruptcy yet. So you foreclose a five hundred thousand dollar piece of property. That forces him into bankruptcy. So he declares bankruptcy after you foreclose on his property. You're saying, yeah, if there wasn't a lien, you're, there's this fine corrupting because there's other assets, they're having judgment on it. It's not a mortgage.
Right.
They have the ability to make a claim. Starting in twenty twenty-one, anyone foreclosed on can make a claim. And then, and then they go through the claim process.
Okay. Up until when?
Uh July first. So for example, this year, we foreclosed on eighteen parcels in April. And they hadn't told July first to file a claim. We did not have anyone file a claim this year.
Well, actually, yeah, I'm just saying this, you know, will, will somebody come back and sue me? Because that individual's on the banks.
That, that could happen with any of the parcels.
Yeah, sure. You can find a lawyer, pursue. Sue about anything at any time. You can try it.
Yeah, and that's my concern is. Yep, I'm, I'm fine.
I think about. To clarify the motion and um at the end is also statements. And approving and upcoming caution and bringing is recommended by council.
Yeah, I just have to.
Wait, roll call, clerk.
Mr. Stansford?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yeah.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Claremont?
Yes.
Mr. Warfield?
Yes.
Thank you, Ford. Good questions. Curious, have a know. Ford matters for discussion. Well, we're going to go to the board matter for discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I may, reference to the Packard Lake Robins. Uh I, I would recommend that you stay in touch with this group, which stay in touch with us. And if they find through the research that was, that this was to memorialize those two soldiers. I would like to see this board pass a resolutions or keep in those legs, not removing the ban. To memorialize what, what those soldiers did.
Would you kind of stand in touch with that then, so that?
Are you sure with?
All right, thanks for Jeff.
Thanks. Um, there's a lot of positive comments on this there, all the improvements there, very, really nice. And, and going there, I don't, the, the dog fence part, that fence, I guess, it has had. Did the company give you some kind of warranty or? I guess the point is, I looked at that small dog, eight, it's like ten inches. Is, is the point that I did keep the dogs in that park, the little one?
Yeah, you, you mean the service games?
Yeah, 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 gap seems very large.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be placing a uh actually piece of uh corded pipe over that to close the gap down.
Oh, so something's going to go between that, oh.
Yeah, yeah. So the park area is uh open to be used, but there'll be improvements that, that are continuing. So we have the signage to put up, uh we have those uh feet barriers of the place. So the hardware, we're going to move on the large dog park area because it's very tall. So we'll move it down a little bit, so, so people can actually uh access the game. We have the benches and, and uh proceeding with the cost of the machine filter there. Anything else, Ford, there for this day?
I have one that is here. Um, meeting before last, um. A Julian Cromley, uh student from the board, uh gave a public opinion, also provided a recalcitrant. Cops have a few months ago. And this is relative to county control over gravel. These gravel operations in my operations. And I noticed in my emails here last week, and you can see similar communication from the tip of a membership counseling. And I see that Kathy arranged to have that on our desk today. But I would hope that um. That this board continues to take a look at that as we move, move down the path. It would appear as though we still do have the ability to control those things on our own. If you read both of these uh pieces of information that we received, it appears to me that their spirit might be to just eliminate all gravel operating. In Chippewa County. That, that won't work. For sure, finding out in this conversation, capital rose of gravel in this county. Uh a lot of stone does leave, you have to quarry and go as far south as Grayling in construction and road projects. So we don't want to cut our nose off despite our face here. Uh but at the same time, there is control that we can exercise. To assure that citizens. Don't lose complete value of property that they own it. Across from it and that the noise levels and the dust levels are controlled and the hours, the operation are controlled. So I would hope that particularly as we address a new master plan, that we uh take exercise and goes where we can over those operations. Uh certainly not in favor of eliminating gravel mining and supporting county businesses, it's not practical.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Well said. Uh this, we're item fifteen ninety, Jen, we're going to go into another closed session.
Sure, my next to just public comment, sure.
Yeah, we can do that. And anybody would like to address the board, please uh come to the podium, state your name.
I'm anything, I'm county supervisor, chairman of Chippewa County MPA, Michigan Township, so I'm a stranger. One of the things I want to, Mr. Winston and Mr. Ross, our township, we're in a shelter. For this ice storm, we started on Monday morning, one o'clock, we had a fire department open, had some people telling, we moved it over. We housed as many as eighteen people at night. In between Mr. Ruston and his crew checking in every day, red cross bringing us cops out. That the people love, that we're not that comfortable to die. Last night slept on one, being that we had a lady with an eight-month-old baby there and I wouldn't leave her there. By yourself. But we still think of, every day they would come, bring food, pick up cops. You didn't know what they were driving. There were different vehicles coming every day, but I guess four of their personal vehicles were used. We were dumbfounded how important this is and things that we never thought of. You know, where they had planes flying to see if anybody was stranded in Pidge River, for example. I spent over a hundred and fifty hours at our hall when we first got going. Mr. Finley, Mr. Ronson called, how long will you keep your hall open till the day you tell us to close? Hope we never, I've been around township now for thirty years, in the fire department, hopefully we never have to do it again, but we do it again tomorrow. Our board changed with us. We all jumped in, we did what we had to do and it was uh. Was help these guys communicate with us and bring the stuff. It couldn't have worked out for our first run. Be able to, yeah. The reason we did it, we got a big commercial generator that will run our town hall, which is the old Catholic church in Oviedo. And the community center. So we could house as many as probably a hundred and fifty people if we had to. And what's the resources that are around, I think. Let's hope we never have to, but if we have to, we got cooking facilities. Bathrooms, our uh setting system, what the heck, but if you see in the last week, twelve thousand dollars later, the township's got ten care of. Ready for the next go around. So, yeah, Mr. Markston, you know, Kwaney Finley, which is our fire chief in Oviedo. Worked very hard with him and Todd Ross, all this girl was unbelievable to work with. Here again, hope we never do it again, but if we have to. Anything they ask.
Thank you, your comedy, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good seeing you. And those army cops are good cops.
Yeah, very good cops.
Anyone else like me, Chris? Well, thank you all for being here. We're going to go into another closed session. Girl, if you know what's in this comment.